I'd like to lead through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we get started tonight, because I know everybody's probably here for the same things, if you could please, if you have your cellphones off, please don't do a lot of crosstalk if you don't mind, so that everybody can be heard. The council will be heard. And then I'll get into some other details later then. Then as council staff reports, I have, let's see, on the 7th, I have the Energy Transition meeting. On the 11th, I had National League of Cities, Small Cities meeting, and then also had a breakfast meeting with the plant manager and the East Metro manager from Excel. The next few days are the League of Minnesota Cities Conference, and then yesterday I had the Coalition of Utility Cities Annual Meeting. On the 12th, I've got a couple of other things here, have another Energy Transition meeting. There's one coming up where I'll have to go to Cohasset for one of those meetings. And then have a meeting coming up to meet with our lobbyists on the next session with the legislature. And then Policy Committees start coming up, so I'm on the League of Minnesota Cities Local Economies, Improving Local Economies, and then Metro Cities Transportation Committee. That's all I have for that. Councilmember Doherty.
Yeah, let's see, last week, Monday, had a Park Commission workshop to go over the park walkthrough and items to be looking at on the budget. And then was a Council of Utility Cities meeting yesterday, and I'll also be attending the League of Minnesota Cities Conference at the end of the week.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I attended Party in the Park this month, along with both of you. I will also be involved in League of Minnesota Cities Policy Committees. I will be chairing the Improving Service Delivery. And the Middle St. Croix Watershed Management Organization's June meeting was canceled for lack of activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Ljunggren.
Just, there's a number of items tonight that will be discussion that were at the Planning Commission earlier this month.
And Councilmember Runk?
Neither the CVB or the Cable Commission met this month, so I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Next is City Administrator Rice.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Happy to report our new Finance Director Allison Egger has started, so she's on day two. We had a passing of the baton, our finance consultant, Dave Mall, who's done a great job over the last couple of months here, filling in for our retired, recently retired Finance Director. So Dave will be seeing him off, and Allison is now, as I said, here on day two. And so it's great to have a fully staffed City Hall, so.
Next is Sergeant Walk.
Sergeant, we took delivery of our new radar trailer. It's a huge improvement over the radar trailer we're replacing. We're getting graphics put on this Friday, and we'll be able to log speeds and traffic data. So we'll be able to take a laptop computer and pull all that data off and have something that people can physically look at and see how many people are speeding, what the speeds are and what times of the day. Our officers took part in security at the Stillwater Area High School for the Special Olympics this last weekend. No major incidents other than medicals. July 16th, we'll be hosting a speed enforcement saturation on Highway 36 at the St. Croix Crossing Bridge. So if you don't want a speeding ticket, I would avoid that area at that time. And then Night to Night is coming up Tuesday, August 6th, and we'll be posting on our Facebook page and as well sending it out in the city newsletter.
Thank you very much. Assistant City Administrator Jennifer.
Yes, Mayor and Council, Jonathan Erismann at 14191 60th Street North was chosen as your most recent recycling reward winner. And then as Carly noted, we did have Party in the Park this month, earlier June 6th. It was well attended. The weather held up for us. And thank you to all staff and council and our residents and our businesses who were a part of that special event every year.
And thank you for putting everything together. You're awesome. And then just as a heads up, we had a work session prior to this meeting, and we're going to be inviting the county to come here to a council meeting to do a presentation on the extension of 58th Street that going between, well, basically quick trip all the way over to Manning. So don't have a date or anything, but you might want to keep that on your radar that we will be inviting them to a council meeting.
Mayor, and will we be, how will we be getting that out to the public? Are we going to?
Well, it's too late to have it in the newsletter, so if you could check the website, check Facebook.
Yeah, just a question on the.
If you could come up, if you could come up and give us your name and address for the record.
Tim Sheridan, 13991 56th Street North. Just a question on the radar trailer. That data that you collect, is there a way that we can look at that, or is it going to be made public, or?
I believe that'll be public data, so.
It'd be very interesting to find out.
Yeah, we have that out. We can get it on a laptop computer and sit down with you and take a look at it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there anyone else? Okay, so move on to the consent agenda, which is approve bills and investments. Check 70680 to 70730 for a total of $338,696.83. Approve check 70731 to 70765 for a total of $190,581.26. Approve City Council minutes from May 28th, 2024. Approve resolution for Party in the Park donations. Approve resolution for donation to the city parks from Jason and Christina Yurtzik. Approve purchase of four Zoll AED units and one Zoll AED trainer unit. Approve purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado police vehicle and uplifting equipment. Approve the appointment of full-time, new hire police officer Jose Rodriguez Barea. Approve resolution appointing election judges for 2024 elections. Approve license for inside sales, storage of fireworks at Walmart. Approve license for outside sales, storage of fireworks at Walmart. Set public hearing to consider extension of interim hemp ordinance. Approve standard premium option for city workers' compensation insurance for July 2024 through July 2025. And appoint Mayor McCumber as voting delegate for the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Business Meeting.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Runk, second by Councilmember Ljunggren. Jacob.
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Ljunggren.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk?
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. We do have a public hearing tonight, and it's a public hearing on request regarding noise ordinance for a concert at Stillwater Bowl on July 12, 2024. Governor?
Yes, Mayor and Council, Stillwater Bowls filed an application for an outdoor concert to be held on July 12, 2024, at Stillwater Bowls facility in their parking lot. Per city ordinance, we do have an audibility provision in there that no sound equipment can be heard past the hours of 10:00 PM beyond a 50 decibel limit, and they are requesting a deviation from that to allow their audibility to extend beyond 50 decibels and up to 100 decibels until 11:00 PM that evening. This is a request that they have brought to the City Council for several years. We have conditions that we've asked them to comply with in previous years. We're asking that if the City Council does approve this this year, we follow the same conditions, and we have had no problems in the past speaking with the Chief of Police with this concert. So leaving it up to you to hold your public hearing.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to address the Stillwater Bowl event? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So, second.
By Councilmember Ljunggren, second by Councilmember Runk. All in favor?
Aye.
I move approval.
What's the request?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Doherty, second by Councilmember Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to the new business. And before we start this, I know a lot of you have, let's see, I have all of your emails, and I think I've responded to hopefully all of you, at least the ones that I saw, and then a lot of phone calls. And I did watch the Planning Commission. All of us get the packets from the Planning Commission and the responses to it. So we're well aware of your comments from then. This is not a public hearing for this. This is a time for the council to discuss this, and if we have questions of the applicants, that this is for our discussion. So just so you know, thank you. So we have the Heights proposed project, comprehensive plan amendment, rezoning, conditional use permits, subdivision, architectural design guidelines, site plan review. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. As the mayor indicated, there's a number of requests being asked for here. Development would be 81-unit market rate apartment referred to as the Heights. It's between Menards and Opah Park Pond Shopping Center on 58th Street. The area surrounding the subject to the west, north, and east is all designated as commercial. We're looking at amendment to the comprehensive plan to go to residential business transitional for this request. The report goes through a number of items related to the comprehensive plan, and the Planning Commission discussed those as part of the public hearing and their discussion. A couple of the points related to the comp plan. It felt that the use for market rate apartments is not at odds with the surrounding commercial use. The traffic analysis has shown that the proposed access will not create issues for sightlines or for traffic. There are a few undeveloped areas left for market rate multiple family developments, and the report points out that employers such as Bellows Landing, in fact, they had proposed a few years ago their own project to add housing. But there is a need out there. The density requirements are also met with this proposal. Part of the request is also to rezone. It's currently zoned open space conservation, which is a holding district. For those areas that were annexed many, many decades ago, some of those areas have not developed. This is one of them. So it's in that holding district of open space, and the proposal is to go to B4 limited business district. B4 district would be consistent with the surrounding B2. The B4 is less intensive, allows for fewer uses than the B2. B2 is our general commercial district. So that is what we chose. Also in that B4 district, multiple family is a conditional use, so again, requiring that process. The project meets the density requirements, requires a subdivision of preliminary and final plot to Opah Park Heights, OPH apartments. Setbacks, there is one setback that is not met. They're requesting additional building height over 35 feet. So the side yard on the east side increases to a 40-foot setback, and they have proposed 24 feet on that side. That's adjacent to the Menards. Proposed street access, there's been a lot of discussion over the years for access for this development. The, there was a supplemental agreement done back in 2004 that talked about access to the west through the Kowalskis Opah Park Ponds development. But again, with the current traffic studies showing that the access point on 58th can achieve the, at least the, meets the traffic guidelines for an intersection. There would still be the ability, and the owners of Opah Park Ponds have said that they'd be willing to allow for access through that. So again, that does provide a secondary access. Also probably pretty important for emergency vehicle access in case there's an issue on 58th. A couple of things, there's a gazebo and play structure that's placed in front of the building, between the building and 58th Street. That requires a conditional use permit because that's considered the front yard. Typically, we only allow those accessory structures in the rear yard, but again, we have a little bit more of a unique of a development. City Arborists provide comments about the tree preservation and landscaping. There is a screening berm that they have proposed. That, in fact, they've even discussed raising that an additional three feet. I'll go through some numbers on that when I do some additional review. Parking requirements, they're proposing that they go over the parking requirement of 81 garage stalls and going to 167, two per unit, roughly two per unit. Lighting plan has been provided. I'll provide some additional information about that. Again, I talked a little bit about building height, give you some numbers. Overall, the Planning Commission reviewed the criteria for conditional use permits for the B4 limited business district and concluded with one abstention to recommend favorably for this request. There were a few questions asked at the public hearing that I wanted to clarify. We asked the applicant to provide a little bit more information, specific information on building height. The height proposed to the midpoint of the highest gable, that's how we measure the building height in our zoning ordinance, is 36.6 feet. 35 is the allowance. So there are 1.6 feet, one and a half feet, over that requirement. To the highest point, to the ridge line of the roof, so that's the very top, the peak of the roof, it is 41 feet. Also, residents asked about the height of the structure from the top of the berm. So there's a berm proposed between 58th Street, the gazebo structure, and then the apartment building. That height is 32 feet from the top of that berm to the midpoint, and 37 feet to the ridge line. Again, the applicants have proposed raising that berm and then adding, there's significant landscaping proposed on that berm also. Also, residents asked about the distance from Newberry Avenue to the apartment access. That distance is 390 feet, as the car would travel. Residents asked about lighting and potential glare. Again, we reviewed the photometric plan, and really, the, most of the foot candle readings are at zero or .1 at the property line, so well within our guidelines for that. That is about it. I guess I stand for any questions at this point. I guess we do have, whoop, you took it off, Jacob. Could I have the screen back? I can't use a pointer on a TV screen anymore, so bear with me. If you can go back to the site plan again, Jacob. So again, that shows just roughly the access on the 58th Street, that place structure and that gazebo structure in front, the parking area, and then the building, an L-shaped building with parking behind. There's additional land further to the, further to the east of this, but that's under the easement area for the high line wires, so that really isn't usable really, other than parking, and they have more than adequate parking. There would then be at the bottom of the screen, roughly there's that curve and that darker line, that's roughly where the access point would go into the Kowalskis development. And if you want to scroll through maybe just the elevations, it's a little hard to read, but again, pretty much your standard-looking apartment building with balconies. So any questions at this point from the City Council?
No. Is the applicant here tonight? Do you have anything?
I'm here, I'm all here.
Hi.
Well, he's coming up. Can I ask a question of Kevin?
Sure.
Kevin, what is the voting requirement? Is there any difference in the voting requirement for changing zoning or comp plan?
Complement amendment, I believe, is a forfeit.
That's forfeit, yeah.
Supermajority.
The zoning change, because you're going from commercial to residential, that's a standard majority vote for that.
For the comp plan, we regard.
The comp plan is a larger requirement.
Right, but yes, the comprehensive plan require that forfeit.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Just fine.
Great. I'm sorry, I'm a little hobbling here.
Didn't want to make you get up.
Yeah, that's okay. I'm here to answer any questions. My name is Joel Larson. I'm the President/CEO of Hampton Companies, proposing the building in front of you, and I'm here to try to answer any of the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks. You can sit down.
I'll just sit here if that's open.
I don't often disagree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission, but this is one case that I do. I have a problem with the 58th Street access, number one. It's on a curb. We've already had issues with kids running across there. The buses are coming out of the high school. The access with Kowalskis. Also, I think, you know, Sergeant Walk, I think it'll be helpful to have those, what the speeds are going to be, because when I drive down there, I'll tell you, some people are going a lot faster than 40. Also, the fact it's a commercial site. We've had different things come to us before, many years ago, like Chili's was one. They were looking to put there, and we didn't want all that traffic going out on the 58th. Everything that's come before was not putting more access on the 58th. Utilize what we have. And this is a perfect spot, in my opinion, that it could have another access, whether it utilizes that road that's alongside American, or there's also the private road that goes between Fury Motors and Kowalskis. There is other points of access that would then get them to other places, which would be either on Neil, the frontage road, get to the roundabout. I also really wasn't crazy about a place structure that close to 58th. You know, little ones can dart out in a second, and that road is just too busy. The other thing was, we don't often, I think Bellows is the only time that I can ever remember that we've ever varied from the height of a building. And I do understand right now, for housing, it's very difficult, you know. Interest rates are high for people, the cost of housing is high, and there is a need for more and more, I would like to call it workforce housing, people that want to work maybe in our city, that they have a place nearby that they could have access to. So those are mainly, and then also, the residents of that neighborhood have such difficulty trying to get in and out of their neighborhood, or even if you go to, say, Cole's Menards, and you try to pull out, trying to cut across, people are going too fast. So I have a real problem with that. That's my feel.
I would echo a fair amount of those comments, Mayor. It's not the design of the building, it's not the way it looks, it's, for me being opposed, it's in the wrong location, and has to do with the zoning. And setting on the Lake Elmo Airport Advisory Commission, I don't, that's something that, where I see where this is located, we're going to have the same issues coming to the city. You put a residential building smack between a Menards, Kowalskis, strip mall, stuff coming in there, whether it's garbage haulers, truck deliveries, same thing at Menards, we're going to constantly get comments about the noise and stuff like that. It just, it's great building, great, you know, something that the city, if there was a different spot, it if there was a different spot, it's just, this isn't the right spot. And same thing with the traffic. I'm sure everybody here had comments, and we heard them in their letters about the traffic, about how to get out of, you know, Newberry, and that's a huge issue. And we hope all these people show up at the 58th Street extension because all that's going to do is add more traffic and problems on 58th Street.
I have to agree with you as far as the look of the building. I think it's gorgeous. I just don't think it's the right place. Now, we did okay for Botwells to build that apartment building for their workforce. But it is right across the street from Botwells in more open area, and it's going to be utilizing the one access that is already there for 58th Street. So it's, yeah, it's probably going to add more traffic. But this is just not the right location for this. Like I said, the building is beautiful, the idea is beautiful, just not the right place.
I would have to, I basically agree with that. I think it's a land use, it's not what that land is meant to be used for. When you have so many different conditional use permits and comp plan changes for one project, it's telling us something that this isn't what was planned for that area. And it's, and I agree, I think the Menards is, you know, 24 hours a day. You have Kowalski's getting deliveries, who knows what times of days that those are coming in. But at most grocery stores, it's all day long. I just can't see it.
Yeah, I want to reiterate what the mayor said with, this is not a great location, especially if we're going to have kids, I mean, if the kids are going to be playing in the place structure, 58th Street's not safe, and you're going to have the same thing at the high school. Pedestrians are going to try to cross 58th to get to the trail system. And that's a big concern. Also on the traffic study, I mean, I know that that's what developer proposed, that's what the developer is saying, but it's a flawed traffic study because it doesn't account for the county's proposed extension demanding and the additional traffic impacts we're going to have there. So I still have concerns about that. And to Mike Littlegren's point, I mean, this is next to a lumberyard. We've had residents concerned already about the lumberyard being too loud. And even when I lived in that neighborhood, Councilman Littlegren can speak more to this, but you could hear the sounds even where I lived. If you're directly next to the lumberyard, we're going to have people in here every meeting upset and unable to move. So I agree, it's a bad location. I also have concerns with their parking lot and their parking variation when we just passed a parking ordinance to encourage a reduction in heat islands. And that's another issue, especially in that spot where it is the most noticeable, so.
Okay, my comments are going to focus mainly on my objection concerning the zoning and the comp plan. I said approximately 20 years ago or so, Councilman Littlegren and I were on a planning commission at that time. And we had two projects that came up at that time, proposed that were in this area. One was the extension Menards. The other was possibility at that time of building a Best Buy store, which would have gone on the front of, in front of Menards. The issue that came up was the recommendation from Scott at that time was that we put a trail along the north side of 58th Street that would have serviced this area. And that was opposed not only by many of us on the commission, but also by the landowner. Because after all, why would they want to put a trail in? Because what was going to go in there, when it went in, was not going to be something that was going to be reliant on a trail. It wasn't going to be residential. So we don't, we did not make that commitment, and we turned it down. We turned that recommendation from Scott down twice. Because it wasn't necessary, because we weren't going to build housing in that area for residents. So I agree when they talk about the fact that the Menards, yeah, we're going to, it would be within months, we would have a petition from people in that building telling us to put restrictions on Menards.
And then also.
As far as the 58th Street, the problem with the speed in that, yeah, there's a problem there. Realistically, they probably have the right to an access if they were to build something in that area. So, you know, the idea that we can limit their access, I mean, I say that because, I guess I've been around too long. When 58th Street was built, the owners at that time, they were going to be building Menards in there, they objected to having to pay for 58th Street because they said it wasn't going to benefit those properties. And so I think it would be, and they were told, no, they had, they had to ante up. They had to pay for, they had to pay because it was going to benefit their property because they were going to have access to 58th Street. So I think that would be a potential problem. So my objections would solely be based on the zoning and the comp plan. I can't see how this is practical. I mean, we, even the developer recognized that it wasn't going to be residential. So to now come back and make residential in there doesn't make any sense.
And to kind of address both, I also wanted to reiterate, a lot of these concerns that I'm hearing amongst our council were brought up at the neighborhood meeting. Former commissioner, planning commissioner, Tim Freeman and I both talked with the developer about many of these concerns. And to go to the access point, I agree with you. I think that we still have some ability to regulate access. But my primary objection to this proposal isn't access, it's residential next to a lumberyard.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, mine is, yeah, it's just the wrong use for that land. It wasn't planned to be used for residential. Everything that's been done in there kept it not being residential. And I just, we need to, something else needs to be developed there in residential. It's a beautiful building, it's a good project, but it's just a wrong.
Great idea, wrong place.
Yep.
I agree that it should stay commercial. And I do feel bad, you know, because this developer's been working on this a long time, and I think it's been at least three years ago that I met with them at Perkins and told them, this will never work, this will never fly, or you're not getting my vote for it. But I'm only one person, so.
Well, it sounds like we're all kind of coalescing. Should we have a resolution maybe for our city attorney to make a finding of fact or resolution? Or Kevin, do you have insight?
Sure. Yeah, in a complex development application like this, when the council's looking at denial, of course you want to have a detailed resolution to that effect with appropriate findings of fact. And the resolution in your packet, based upon the planning commission's recommendation, is obviously a approval resolution. So what we would recommend is delaying any formal action on this item until staff can prepare a written resolution consistent with the commentary and kind of direction that we're getting from the council tonight. We've got, so the council's aware of the 60-day rule under statute for decisions on these sort of applications, although there's a right for the city to extend that out to 120 days. And it's a routine course of action on the part of our city to automatically extend it out with the applicant to 120 days in these sort of complex development applications, just to make sure we have adequate time. This application came in in mid-May, and so we've got out until mid-September to reach that 120-day timeframe. And so we would anticipate coming back to you with a resolution, probably at your July or August meeting.
Should we make?
Can we make a motion to deny with waiting for, approve or deny, whatever council's flavor is, but with final ratification at our next council meeting? No, I think you just, you've given staff direction. I don't think you need to make any motion at this point on the item. I think there's just, there's no action tonight. Yes, your action is going to be on the final resolution. Okay, so you pretty much know what we all think. We've heard a lot of the commentary, yeah.
Okay.
Scott and I, along with the administrative.
Emails and.
We probably should enter those at the record formally, if, Kevin, if there's a way for us.
Well, actually, I did make copies of all of them because Julie wanted, our building official wanted to have it as part of the record, all of your comments, so. Sure. And so the, this is, as the mayor indicated, not technically a public hearing tonight. And so I don't think we need to call out with specifics all the different commentary. But the mayor certainly made reference to the fact that she and probably other council members have gotten a number of different email feedbacks from local residents. And I take it, I kind of think it was implied, but to make clear, those were generally comments of residents who were not in favor of this project, it sounds like.
Exactly.
And so. And some had different comments as far as what they thought was their priority, but you get the message. Sure, so those are technically part of the record that will be in the city's public, you know, documentation of this project that'll be in the city's files if anyone ever wanted to ask for them. And hopefully all of you know that I did that. Okay, so you don't need any motion, we could just move on to the next item?
Correct.
Thank all of you for coming. Thank you for all of your comments. Very helpful. And don't forget the next meeting because we're going to try to get the county to come here, and then we can cover both things at the same time? Thank you.
Should we take a little break?
You know, we could take a couple-minute break, and then whoever's the last one out, maybe just close the door in case there's some hawk out in the breezeway. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody, nobody here?
Hey, you haven't slipped down yet.
No, I got my foot brace in there.
Yes.
Move on to the next item of business, which is 5676 Oak Green Avenue North, comprehensive plan amendment. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We have a application for a comprehensive plan amendment. The classification of the property is currently low-density residential in the comprehensive plan 2018. Applicant has proposed five buildings, each with two dwelling units, a total of 10 units in the development. The low-density residential is not consistent with that proposal. It would need to go to a medium-density classification. At this time, we're only dealing with the comprehensive plan amendment, not the details of the project. But we did share the plans that the developer had provided, just for your information. The, you may remember back in 2022, the applicant had proposed going to 36 condo units on the subject site, and that was recommended denial by the planning commission and turned down by the city council at that time. Property is zoned open space conservation district. Again, we're not looking at a zoning, just a comp plan amendment. But the property would need to be rezoned to R2 low and medium-density residential if this were to move forward. The planning commission looked at this and recommended denial. I believe the vote was 3-2 on that to recommend denial of this, of this request. Subject property is 2.9 acres in size, it's two parcels. One of the things that we had asked for and have received this week is a survey of the property. To calculate density, you cannot include the right-of-way. And this is a, you know, a property that still includes the portion of Oak Green Avenue as part of its lot area, but there's an easement over that, obviously, for the right-of-way. So with that, we did get that clarification this week. And we are looking at a, at a size of the parcel without that right-of-way of 2.75 acres. So my, in my report, I had calculated roughly about 2.7 acres, a little bit over. So that was, was correct. What the original report said, again, taking a more conservative approach with the planning commission on this, we have consistently said it could only support six units. Actually, looking at that, now that we have a survey can verify it, they can actually do eight units on this, on this site with the current density requirements or with the current size of the lot. The, even with this change, though, the applicant has indicated they would like to do 10 units and does still require that medium-density land use classification. Just a few more details. Again, the report goes through many of the points of the comprehensive plan. And I won't go into detail on that. But again, in order to support this particular development, at least a proposal that Mr. Junker has, we would need that comprehensive plan amendment. And then to follow up, again, if this proceeds forward with the council, we would do the rezoning and necessary plan review for it. Mr. Junker has provided some additional information as well as the survey. I believe you've received copies of that. So again, there's a June 20th memo where he talks about that density requirement. So with that, any questions?
I have a couple. Actually, this is going in the right direction considering 38 was just way too much. But I hate to put you on the spot. I know on Oak Grove, yeah, Oak Cove, how many acres is that? I think it's 11 homes on there, but it might be more acreage. I mean, if it would complement that kind of development, I could see that.
I could probably look it up, but I don't know it off the top of my head.
Okay, sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
Any questions for Scott? There's the applicant here.
Yes, can we ask a question?
No, that was done at the public hearing.
Okay.
And you can send an email to us and give us your comments, but no, the public hearing has already taken place. Jamie?
Good evening, mayor, council, and staff. How was the process? Went very well this time around. I'll speak to a little bit on the back of this document I requested to mayor that I'd get six or seven minutes to put it in perspective, and she granted that. Because people can read quickly, this is important. So this is just coming verbatim from the plan commission meeting. And basically, the meeting was very good. The plan commission really dug in, it was a really good debate. We thought that, that we were going to get a favorable vote there. And I was surprised, and I had to watch the video to see what happened. But very, very many good comments. Commissioner Van Dyke, you know, let it off, and she said, I just feel it's much better than the other plan he came with a couple of years ago, and I feel like, I mean, it's his property. Can't he develop it to a certain point how he wants to? It's kind of like he's in a catch-22 where you know he can make some decisions. Is it true, is it true he can put the six different houses on there? And he can have six different driveways? Can he not do that? Is that wrong? Mr. Richards did explain probably the idea of two driveways coming in is a pretty good idea. And if it went two houses, that would, that would be an issue that the staff and the planning company could speak to. It's not our desire to put single-family houses in. We think the town, the city gets a better plan with a cohesive, all 2.9 acres under one plan cohesive. We think the biggest risk is that if we sell the house and the acre, someone will buy the house, and in three, four years, they'll be coming back here. We'll be gone, and they'll be asking you to split that one acre. Could be, it's not our desire to do that. It's not what we want. She concluded, my other comment would be that if there is such a concern over it, why don't they purchase the land as a group and keep it however they want as green space? And Chairperson Vandenberg said, you know, I was thinking the same thing. The individual that purchased the property X number of years ago has the right to develop the property as long as it is within the comp plan. And to me, this preliminary proposal, although it is not a proposal, as Mr. Richards said, shows an option that would make the property potentially. shows an option that would make the property potentially usable in the community. And you can read on, and Commissioner Husby was of the mindset, single-family homes. And Chairperson, Chairperson Kramer called for a vote, and I was kind of surprised because the conversation at the board was going very well, but I understand he has that right. And Commissioner Blake was like, I couldn't believe how quickly that dude can think. But he was like, had the correct question, it was, what are the additional, you know, comments? And he said, well, I, I think I'm still with what Ms. Van Dyke said at the beginning. It's Mr. Junker's right to develop the land. I think it is a fair compromise, which is amenable to the traffic. I think the point that this property needs to be developed. I feel Mr. Junker has done a good job coming back with an amenable solution. So we're pleased with all that, and a little bit surprised that the vote didn't go our way. We felt that it was good for this project if the planning company and the staff gave the recommendation, which they did. That was the first good news and momentum. So the planning company on May 8th, if you care to flip, I've just got a two-minute summary. On May 8th, myself and our old-time realtor, Dave Harvey, met with the planning staff, and we really felt we had a little bit of hope for the project. On June 6th, they issued their recommendation, and it is a recommendation to take the property to mid-density with stipulations, with contingencies. And as an applicant, we're on top and into every one of those contingencies, we're willing to do them all. There was a lot of concern at the plan commission, could a buyer do 16 units? Commissioner JB stated that. He said, you know, 10 would be good, 16 wouldn't be. We're saying the max for this project is 10. We won't do, we'll stipulate that, that that's it. That's what we want, and you have the pictures of what the project is, we will do. It's high-end finishes, the city would be proud of it. It brings everything under one roof. And kind of a thing is, is that that night at the plan commission, it was six units, six units. And Dave and I walked away and said, how do we get six units? You know, you do the math. So we asked Mr. Richards, how do you get the calculation? He explained it tonight. I thought it was very good, good government, great speed. He put it in there, he corrected it, he specified it. Now the unit says eight. But it wasn't that night. It wasn't that night for the plan commission. They're thinking six. It's a big difference. Six versus 10. Our number is 8.3 versus 10, really, really close, council. Why is it good to go mid-density? Why, what would one good thing be? It all comes under the staff and the planning company's umbrella. They're going to review this whole plan. If you're telling us it's eight, we're going back, we're still not going to want to do single families. It's just not part of the dream. I personally think it's better that one unified plan, two driveway entrances, that's better. If anyone, and it's not going to be us, it will not be us that makes a crazy project. We want to get this approval because it's the right plan.
Okay, Mr. Junker, we have already read all of this, and I really appreciate all of your comments. The object right now is to live a comp plan amendment, not the entire project as it is today.
I got you.
So...
Can I make one last statement?
Quickly.
Please approve it tonight, and then it goes under the planning commission, whatever project is, which will be the project we have, will come under their guidance. We'll agree to all the stipulations. And then if you don't agree to it tonight, I'd say send it back to the plan commission, where they get a chance to hear, really, it's eight. I would feel that would be a win-win. And that's it. I would, I would feel that it would be fair that they heard on the 13th that it was eight and that six units. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions from anybody?
Scott, is it fair to say that the, that that's what's driving six is, that's what you could put on underneath low-density?
It's actually eight. So it'd be eight. Yeah, now that we got the survey, we could verify what is actually buildable land as opposed to right-of-way. It would be eight.
Versus, versus medium-density and the 10 that Mr. Junker is looking for.
He could do eight, he could do eight units on that development and not have to do a comprehensive plan change. One quick clarification, I did look back at the development over here. That was 6.7, 6.7 acres, 13 lots, a net density of about 2.58 units per acre.
Okay. That helps answer that. Thank you.
Question I have...
I think it's going in the right direction as far as cutting down from 38 or whatever it was. It was way too much.
I agree.
And it is closer to a residential area. And, go ahead, Mike.
My question was, Scott, how big is a unit defined in code?
How big is a unit as far as the square footage?
Well, the reason I, because I, I didn't understand this name, showed it to Mike. And Mr. Junker's statement, he says that, he was talking about the finishes, he says it would be, have all the same finishes and may have a side patio. He's talking about going to a single-story unit. He says, any smaller single-family would be in the estimated range of 2,500 to 3,300 square feet. And that's where I don't understand, because 3,300 square feet, particularly if you're talking to one-story, I've got a two-story house that's 1,700. So to describe a, a small, a smaller single-family home as being 3,300 square feet, I just...
As we all know, house sizes have increased significantly over the last few decades. So yeah, 3,300 square feet is a sizable, you know, a single-family dwelling.
I wouldn't describe that as a small home.
I wouldn't want to claim that.
For a, and considering a one-story.
People on Lake Minnetonka, and you know, their acreage versus here, you know, it's all pretty relative of what's, what's large. But 3,300 square feet is pretty generous.
But I mean, if we built, if he had 10 units and they were all 3,300 square feet, it's going to get rather crowded. That's why I'm wondering, how do we define how much room they have to have per unit?
Well, we do have a density requirements, and they're well within the density requirements. You would actually need only 6,500 square feet of lot to provide for 10 two-bedroom units, and the entire site is, you know, 2.7 acres, but 120,000 square feet. So, you know, it meets the density requirements in terms of the way the zoning ordinance looks at it for, for, for the overall lot size. And with, with that calculation, two bedrooms is a certain number of, but it's 6,000 square feet a lot area required per unit, and with each bedroom, you add another 500. So that's how I came up with the 6,500 square feet is required with that. With the, with the numbers of units and bedrooms.
They would need six.
Yeah.
Per unit, they would need that.
Josh, do you have any questions, or Carly?
I don't, this one, yeah, this is a, I mean, it just, I don't, this property's always been kind of a stigma to me. It's, I just think it's, what's proposed, well, I guess we're just looking at, I think the low-density is where it was at, and I would be, I, they'll keep it the same. I can't see making a change. Would be my, my feeling on it.
I agree with that. I think keeping it low-density would be a good idea.
Mike or Mike, any questions?
Mayor, in this particular case, because we did have a recommended, recommendation of denial from the planning commission, I prepared a positive and then a negative resolution for your review, so.
Anybody have a motion that they'd like to make? There's no other discussion? And this is just for the comp plan amendment?
It's just for the comp plan, yes.
I would make a motion that we...
Oh, what? Go ahead.
I make a motion that we deny the comp plan amendment request.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Doherty. Jacob?
Councilmember Doherty.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Littledrigen.
Yes.
Councilmember Runk.
Yes.
Mayor McCumber.
Yes. It's getting better. Getting closer. Thank you.
And I assume, council, with that, when you said that, you were recommending the approval of the resolution, that is, the denial resolution?
The denial, as recommended by the planning commission.
And drafted by Scott.
Sure.
Okay, are there any other council items or announcements? Is there a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Johnson, second by Councilmember Littledrigen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.